It is six thirty-seven. We are back from executive session. There was no action on two point one or two point two. With that, we are going to do our invocation and pledge. Mr. Powers, if you can please lead us in our invocation, and then Mr. Towery, if you can lead us in our pledges. All right, that brings us up to rules of the quorum. We will pick a name out of the jar here to dedicate the meeting to. This will be for Specialist Harris, who was killed in action in Afghanistan in 2017. So we'll honor his memory tonight. We're gonna open up a public hearing on item five point one. Public hearing to receive comments on the proposed annexation to incorporate one-one-three-point-six-seven-six acre tract of land situated in the K Latham Survey Abstract Number one-three-three and the R Peckham Survey Abstract Number one-seven-five Rockwall County, Texas, being a proportion of a call three-six-zero-point-two-nine-five acre tract of land owned by Willow Creek three-six-zero-LP, generally located south of FM five-fifty between Smith Road and State Highway two-oh-five and contiguous to the existing city limits of McLennan Chisholm, Texas. It is six forty, and this public hearing is open. And no one will be speaking? Oh, sorry, didn't see it. Come on up, Mr. Black. You're gotta move you to the front next time. And make sure the mic's on.
All right. Hi, my name's David Black. I'm at fourteen-nineteen C and L Lane. It goes red. Be a lot better than that. All right, thanks. I was just curious about this development, and this, the annexation is one hundred and thirteen, the total. Given the background, the staff put out a background on it, and it's gonna be added to another, I think, three-hundred-and-sixty acres of land, and it says that, just from the staff report, it says the proposed Willow Creek project is a master-planned residential community consisting of approximately four-hundred-and-fourteen single-family lots on an overall density of about one-point-one-five dwelling units per acre. So I guess my question is, is that buildable acres, or is that just everything, you know, floodplain and everything else? The reason I ask that is because I'm thinking about land use, and for the master plan, you know, it's got a minimum acre size, but for everything else, there is a density size. So is this the density number that you would see in the city comprehensive plan when they define density? I think it would be really close because that adds up to like five-hundred acres, and there's four-hundred-and-fourteen dwellings. There's not much room for streets and floodplain and parks and everything else. So the question is, what is this development going to look like as far as residential homes and dwellings? Is it going to comply with the residential lot size, whatever land use this turns out to be that's called out in the comprehensive plan? Doesn't, it doesn't look that way to me, but I could be missing something.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Is there anyone else? Okay, it is six forty-four, and we will close the public hearing. That brings us to citizens' comments. Angela, do we have any citizens' comments? Does anyone want to speak on citizens' comments? Okay, we will close citizens' comments at six forty-four as well, which brings us to consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda, or if anyone wants an item pulled for discussion at this time.
I'd like to pull seven point three, please.
Okay, Councilmember Powers wants to pull seven point three. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we will do a show of hands next time to make it faster. So we have pulled seven point three. Is seven point one and seven point two okay for the rest of consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve seven point one and seven point two on consent.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. Show that unanimous. Seven point three was pulled, so I will open this up for discussion. Mr. Powers?
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, could you just explain your view of this? If we were to approve this tonight, what is the limitations, if any, of the approval of seven point three?
Yes, sir. If, should City Council approve this item this evening, which is awarding the contract or the request for proposal to this particular contractor, that, what that does is, it still would require, it still would require prerequisite for city staff to issue a notice to proceed before the contractor can actually begin working on this. So it is, it is one, one aspect of the, of the process, being that the City Council would need to approve the contract, and then staff would need to go ahead and issue the notice to proceed in order for the contractor to begin working on the project.
Thank you.
Councilmember London?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Towery?
I'm good.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Does this, in effect, also kind of lock in a price now, as opposed to if we didn't do it?
Well, that depends on how long it takes us to complete the project. Typically, it would be about for, it would lock in the price for about six months. Anything beyond that, we would have to go back out for, to reissue the bid.
Councilmember Dean?
Nothing.
Councilmember Goodwin?
This is, I'm assuming Councilman Towery's looked this over, and there was a couple other bids and questions about, I guess, the quality of work or how it was being done. This is solid, in your opinion?
Is, I didn't get to see the update from, but as long as where the warranty was stated, and it included the, was it the two-year?
Yes, sir. It includes a two-year warranty.
Thank you.
Councilmember Powers, do you have anything else, sir? All right, so there's no further discussion. All those in favor, by a show of hands. Aye? Okay, show that unanimous, Angela. It's gonna bring us up to items for discussion. Eight point one, we will be removing from discussion tonight, and we will move that to the council meeting on twelve-nine. Mr. Fabrice? On eight point one?
December ninth.
I'm sorry, December ninth. I don't remember what I said. With that being said, without doing the annexation, that will automatically pull item eight point two as well to the December ninth, if we can make sure those two are on the agenda. And with that being said, for anyone who may be watching on these two items, Councilmember Powers has asked for us to do a workshop. So we are going to do a workshop on eleven-seventeen of this month, so next Monday, we if we haven't posted it already, it will be posted before the evening ends, and we will have a workshop on this particular, these two items on eleven-seventeen, so that when we come to discussion on twelve-nine, we will be good. That's gonna bring up items eight point four. It's going to go in front of eight point three due to the order in which this has to be done. So eight point four reads, discuss and consider approval of a resolution authorized in the city of McLennan Chisholm, Texas, to enter into a development and chapter three-eighty agreement with Willow Creek three-six-zero-LP for the project known as Willow Creek. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is open for discussion. I will turn this over to the city planner and the city manager.
Mayor and council members, Willow Creek three-sixty-LP has submitted a development, a development and, and chapter three-eighty agreement, and a voluntary annexation petition covering approximately three-hundred-and-sixty-point-two-ninety-five acres of land located along FM five-fifty within the city and its planning area. The proposed Willow Creek project is a master, master-planned residential community consisting of approximately four-hundred-and-fourteen single-family lots on an overall density of about one-point-fifteen dwelling units per acre. The agreement establishes the framework for developments, including public infrastructure, construction, park and trail dedication, and economic development incentives in the form of roadway impact fee waiver. It also outlines the intent to create a public improvement district to finance eligible infrastructure improvements through assessments and possible paid bond proceed. The developer is here this evening in the audience. I believe they have a presentation that will be, and you'll have an opportunity to ask any questions you might have at that time. Staff does recommend approval of this resolution and development agreement as presented, subject to the condition that the city enters into an interlocal agreement with high prairie water supply for the ownership, operation, and maintenance of the water infrastructure serving the Willow Creek development, as well as that the HOA agrees to maintain all sidewalk, including sidewalks located in the public right-of-way that will be dedicated to the city. With that said, I am happy to answer any questions, and perhaps this may be a good time to begin that presentation.
Okay, I'm open to holding questions until the presentation, if the council's good with that. That's okay. Ty, the floor is yours, sir. Thank you.
Testing? Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ty Young, and I'm here with Scorebird Company to discuss our Willow Creek project. It's a project that we've been working on for a while now, but we're really excited about the opportunity to bring this community to McLennan Chisholm. The agenda for tonight, so we'll jump into the company background and then go through a few example Scorebird projects, and then discuss the subject property. We have been working on this for a while with staff, and we got, we've done a few different concept plans, so I'll take you through that progression. And then we'll look at a few different other communities in McLennan Chisholm and discuss density, and then dive into the development regulations, park dedication, Clutz Road improvements, annexation, and then the PID, and everyone's favorite representative product, and then end with some closing thoughts. So Scorebird Company is a both local and privately-owned development company. We've been in business for about forty years now. Have about a hundred and forty projects all over the, the metroplex and really exclusively in DFW Metroplex. Worked in quite a few different cities and municipalities. Got about twenty-five active projects in development or sellout right now. We've got a great reputation for building high-quality and long-lasting communities, and we're a local group that you can pick up the phone and call. We're happy to work through any issues, and we'll be there after, after we deliver the lots as well, so. Do infill sites, big master plans like this one. See, so we'll take you through a couple example projects. We've been super active in Rockwall County, so done about a dozen products, projects in the city of Rockwall, done some projects in Heath, a handful in Sunnyvale, Rowlett, and did our first project in McLennan Chisholm last year. So this is one of our master-planned communities in Rockwall. It's called Breezy Hill. It's about four-hundred-and-five acres, and some similarities with this project to our project is you've got the hundred-foot lots in blue, and then over in orange on the south side, you've got your, your sixty-foot lots, yellow seventies and purple eighties. So those lots, I'd say, are more similar in size to Sonoma Verde, whereas what we'll be doing is the hundred-foot, and actually, our smallest lot size is a hundred-and-ten-foot wide lot, so it'll be more representative of those blue lots. But this development featured some high-quality amenities, which we'll be doing as well in our project. You can see the, the nice entry monument there on the bottom picture, and then the pretty large pavilion, which we'll be actually including in our park, park plans. Another master plan that we've done in Rockwall, a similar deal, Stone Creek. Again, you have the, the variety of lot sizes, so you've got your sixties and eighties on the southeast side, and then your hundred-foot lots, again, similar to our development, on that west side. Got a bunch of builders in this one, just like Breezy Hill. You've got Windsor, Drees, Megatel, Pace Setter, all quality builders. And again, this one was, had some great amenities to it. So we also have a history of doing large lot communities, so this is one of our recent ones in Sunnyvale, called La Brisas at Stony Creek. This is a acre lot community where we had Drees, Windsor, and Kindred build. They all have great product, and it's in sellout right now, so all acre, one-acre minimum lots. And then we have Ridge Point Estates over here in McLennan Chisholm, which I'm sure you're all familiar with it. Got Toll Brothers and Windsor Homes building in this one as well. I know that all of our builders are really excited to be selling. You've probably seen some of the houses go up, and our landscaping in the front came out nicely, along with our entry monuments. We couldn't be more excited about this one, so. Now we'll take you through the subject property, so our Willow Creek property. You can see it's located south of FM five-fifty, west of Highway two-oh-five, and then north of Clutz, to the east of Smith Road, so we kind of abut each of these collector roads. Our site is about three-hundred-and-sixty acres. It is a currently zoned PD development district, and that's, I think, a part of the old Triple Creek Ranch zoning right now, and part of our property is within the ETJ, which we'll get into, but that is unzoned. The future land use calls for the master-planned community, and then there's a small portion that's designated as the Heritage Center. So like I said, we put a lot of work into planning this project with staff. Actually began pursuing the property over in August twenty-twenty-four, so well over a year ago, with this, with the landowner, and then kind of right after that, when we entered into negotiations with him, we've, we've had meetings with staff, the mayor, and then some members of the old council, along with High Point, just about a year ago this month in November twenty-twenty-four. So after a while, we were finally able to reach an agreement with our landowner and got the property under contract in May this year, and we submitted our initial concept plan in July twenty-twenty-five, which this, this plan represents. And you can see it's a half-acre lot plan with acre lots adjacent to Chism Crossing, kind of in that northeast, eastern quadrant of the, the picture there, and kind of a, this was our first crack at it, so a little bit bare bones, but the, our vision for the project was essentially a large lot Sonoma Verde. So something different about this project is, we'd be doing, different than our Ridge Point project, is we'll be doing streets with curb and gutter and underground storm systems. Everything will be on sewer, not septic like Ridge Point, and our lots would be kind of significantly bigger than some of the, the smaller high-density subdivisions over here, but not quite as big as your, your acres. So a few months later, we, that's when really the, the heavy coordination with staff and the, the old city manager Beverly, and then Fabrice took place. So this is where we got some feedback from staff to incorporate some larger lots where we abut FM five-fifty and Clutz Road, and that was really just because of the, the visibility that you see off these roadways. Staff felt like it would be better to have more of like an acre feel just as you're driving by, and not only did we upsize those lots, we also increased our landscape buffers from twenty feet to a hundred feet, which, just for perspective, Ridge Point Estates over on that north side that we did had no landscape buffers, and legacy trails also did not have any landscape buffers, so you'll get, you'll definitely have a nice feel to it as you're driving by, and added some, a wet pond or a water feature right, right off our entry off FM five-fifty-two, just to give it some more curb appeal, along with a divided entry. And kind of the biggest change in this plan is we incorporated an eight-foot hike and bike trail all throughout the community that will connect the future RISD school site, kind of on the top below where it says Chism Crossing, that parcel that's kind of in an L-shaped. It'll connect the school with the park land over on the west side, and then down to the southern end of our property, in addition to some connection, trail connectivity with legacy trails to really give it a cohesive feel to this section of the city. So again, we made some additional revisions in October of twenty-twenty-five, and really, the biggest revision here is incorporating more of a variety of lot sizes. So this is where we kind of went up from our typical point-five acre and took it, did a range of lots, so required some lots to be within that point-five-five to six-five acre range, and then six-five to seven-five, and then added some heritage lot types, which those are really those perimeter lots that we were talking about. Those are three-quarter acre lots, and then kept the estate lots. So this was pretty close to being brought to council, but a few things changed within the last couple weeks that caused us to change plans one more time, but this was, this agreement contemplated three-hundred-and-eighty-one lots with an approved flood study, and then we also did add some trails around these water features. So that takes us to the plan that we're presenting to you tonight. This is the November twenty-twenty-five plan. So like I said, a few aspects changed, but to, the two big ones were we incorporated a Vista Lot category, which that was a result of the city requesting that we made improvements to Clutz Road, which was not currently contemplated in our previous plan. So even instead of just doing the road along our frontage, we've committed to doing the road, rebuilding the two lanes with the curb and gutter section from Smith Road on the west all the way to two-oh-five on the east. And in exchange, or in return, we needed to have some way to be able to finance or pay for that improvement, so we incorporated a little bit more density into the internal section of our community. But the beauty of this plan is, as you drive down the street, all the lots are gonna be the exact same width or have the same minimum width, so these will still be a hundred-and-ten-foot wide lots, which are pretty large when you do compare it to another high-denser subdivision. And even in Legacy Trails or Ridge Point, I think Legacy Trails is a hundred-foot minimum, or Ridge Point is one-thirty-five to one-fifty. So really, these are gonna look very similar or identical as you drive across the street. The only difference between these lot types are you're gonna have less of a backyard, but other than that, the product on the homes will be the same, and the feel from the street will be the same. So we also added one additional large water feature due to some floodplain reclamation that our engineers looked at, kind of in the south-central part of the site, so it'll be a nice wet pond as you drive kind of the main stretch from five-fifty to Clutz Road through the subdivision. You'll pass actually two wet ponds with water features. We did also extend that trail through the central part of our community, where it connects to the trail and the open space running north and south to that little hook aspect of it. And then, like I said, we will be improving Clutz Road. So I'll take you through a little analysis of some of the new projects in McLennan Chisholm, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, but just try to pull it together in one exhibit here. So this is really to compare our density with some of the other projects in McLennan Chisholm or McLennan Chisholm ETJ, like our project is in both the ETJ and the city limit, so I decided to just include basically everything within the corporate boundaries of McLennan Chisholm. So starting with the highest-dense project, you've got Maraki on the south side. You're at two-point-eight units per acre, and then the newly-approved Sonoma Verde additions. You've got Sonoma Verde East, the former Tate Track at two-point-four-two units per acre, and then the former Sloan Track, the Taylor Duncan property is at Sonoma Verde North, two-point-three-zero units per acre. And then Horizon Lakes, I believe, is in both Heath and McLennan Chisholm, but they're at about a two-point-oh-two units per acre. And then Altera's Legacy Trails to the north of our property is at one-point-two-eight units per acre, and then you have our Ridge Point at, which is an all-acre lot community at point-eight-four units per acre. We are on the lower end of the spectrum with one-point-one-five units per acre, and we actually were below the, the magic number of one units per acre with our last plan, but due to the increased density to, to fund the full Clutz Road, both lanes, we are now at one-point-one-five, but still quite on the, the lower end of the spectrum here. Now we can jump into some of the development regulations, and this is kind of the meat of the, the planning efforts between us and, and staff. So you've, just kind of a little agenda here, you've got lot mix, lot standards, entryways, streets, building, landscaping, fencing, and then neighborhood amenities. So as far as our lot mix, as Fabrice mentioned, we're contemplating a maximum lot count of four-fourteen, which puts us at the one-point-one-five units per acre. Now, we did set regulations for each of the different lot, lot sizes or lot types. We'll have eight estate lots, and these will all be placed next to Chism Crossing to, to match their lot size, so just being a, a good neighbor there, and we have a minimum of twenty heritage lots, and these were primarily placed near our entryways, just to give them a bigger feel, as I mentioned earlier. And then we have a quarter of our lots, which will be manor lots or manor-two lots, so the higher, the, the larger manor lots, and then a third of our Vista lots will be Vista-two lots, which are the, the medium Vista-two lots in between point-four and point-five acres. And then we're requiring at least seven Vista lots, and that's over near the parkland dedication. And then I included these graphics at the bottom, which kind of puts into perspective how lots these actually, or how big these lots actually are. So just for reference, you've got a sixty-foot by a hundred-and-twenty-foot lot on the left-hand side, which is representative of more of your higher-density subdivisions. That's, that's one of the lot sizes that Sonoma Verde has, so just if, I know a lot of people either know people that live over there, live over there themselves. That's what their lot's on, and our lot's about double the width of theirs with significantly larger backyards, and then kind of as you go up the chain to Vista-two, Vista-three, they just keep getting deeper and potentially wider as well. Lot standards, so we have acreage requirements, so I kind of went through that a little bit already. And then lot widths, all of them will be one-hundred-and-ten feet. Lot depths, one-hundred-and-thirty-five feet for vistas, and then one-hundred-and-fifty for manners, heritage, and estates. Really, for the managed, manor heritage estates, they're gonna be closer to two-hundred, all the way up to three-fifty. way up to 350. We do have some kind of weird shaped lots that can do, you can go as deep as that. So we set the minimum at 150, but they'll all meet the acreage requirements. And then dwelling sizes will, will be building nice product, large product, quality products. So we set those at 2,200 square feet for vistas and then 2,800 for manners, heritage and estate lots. I did include some graphics just to put the lot widths into perspective. So we covered that Stone Creek project in Rockwall earlier in the presentation. That's, those are 100 feet wide. So you can kind of see how that compares to a 60 foot wide lot in Sonoma Verde. You're barely even able to see the other houses on the, from the Google Street View maps. You're going to have some good separation in between lots and it gives you the ability to do larger product, which is something that we intend to do with the builders we're talking to. And in the bottom section, you can see really all of our development standards, setback requirements. It's a little small for me to read, but essentially you have your acreage, your lot width, which we hit on, lot depth, dwelling size, your setbacks. So front 20 feet for the Vista Lots, which is similar to Sonoma. And then we're going up higher to 25 for these larger, larger lots. And since we are doing curb and gutter, it's really not necessary to, to go much higher than that because you don't have to put a big old open swale in front of the lots and make upgrade and, and then back towards the house. And then you've got your side yards at, at 10 feet, but we did just, in some discussions with staff, for our bigger lots, it was brought up that if you, if you are going to live on a bigger lot, it might be nicer to have some additional separation in between houses. So we did kind of voluntarily put additional building to building separation requirement on these lots to take it from, so typically you'd have 10 foot on one, one side and then 10 foot on the other, but we expanded that to 30 feet for the, the heritage in between houses and then 40 feet for the estates. So they'll have a, a true more acre lot feel to those. And then you've got your maximum lot coverage requirements. So entryways, we're really excited about this. I think it's going to be a great look off of FM 550 and Clutz Road when we, we build it out. So you've got the 100 foot buffer off FM 550 and it will give us the opportunity, opportunity to do some rolling berms. So the earth will be built up kind of with steep slopes and we'll, they'll be undulating so back and forth. And we'll do tree plantings, kind of mulch it, give it some nice landscape feel as well as that divided entry off FM 550 with some nice monumentations. Not necessarily doing a water feature, but we're, obviously we'll work with staff to get a design that the city is excited or just as excited as we are about. You'll have the pond over there off FM 550, which we hit on, plus monuments at each entry. So we have two entry points off Clutz and then one entry point off FM 550. And then we'll be dedicating right away in line with the master thoroughfare plan, which has been gone over with staff and, and engineering. So streets, another thing that we're really excited about is the view corridors that you'll have as you drive down the subdivision. So we have lots fronting open spaces. And then as you do hit intersections or kind of go into that terminal view, you'll be having a view that overlooks Brushy Creek or water features or just general open space. So it's not going to look like a monotonous subdivision. It was intentionally designed this way to have great views as you're driving down the subdivision, which are represented by those blue arrows. And as I mentioned, all streets will be constructed with curb and gutter and an underground storm system. The city does require 27 foot back-to-back street widths. We increased that to 31 feet back-to-back, just to give it more wide street appeal, extra park, extra room for parking. Also hitting the engineering specification. So I know that the subdivision ordinance recently went up to, to seven inches. We added a clause that we, we could go to six inches if we get a recommendation in our final engineering geotech report and got approval from the city engineer. Otherwise it will be six or could go up to eight inch if the soils call for that as well. And then one unique thing with our subdivision compared to the one adjacent to us, Legacy Trails, is we're going to have sidewalk all along our streets on both sides of the street. So it's going to be a walkable community, which is something kind of unique in this, this little area. So excited about that as well. Yeah. And, and the HOA will maintain these in the, in the public right of way and open spaces. Another thing we worked intensively with staff is our, our building regulations and just landscaping requirements. So this is something that's really not required for a developer to do. It's, the city doesn't really have the authority to regulate these building materials, but just with us wanting to do something that the city will be proud of and to ensure a high quality project, we outlined these specifications and got with our builders and figured out some things that would work. So we are implementing an 80% masonry requirement, just using high quality building materials. We're going to do anti-monotony regulations to, so you're not just going to see the same elevation repeating as you drive down the street. Also, we're going through extra effort with our perimeter lots where we're going to do, not only are they going to be larger, but we'll do side or J swing garages near the entryway. And then whenever we do flat front entry garages, we'll be planting an extra tree and doing a landscape bed or trellis, just something to, to give that lot an extra appeal. And every, every lot is going to have at least two trees that we'll be planting in the front yards or our builders will be planting. Another idea that we had as we were brainstorming this project is some architectural features. So we, it, it's kind of a new, modern look to have your mullions or your window frames be a darker color. It just adds kind of a nice, nice look to it. So we're going to regulate that. And then also give the houses individual mailboxes instead of doing the cluster mailboxes where everyone gathered. It's just a little bit more convenient for the homeowner. That is pending if we can get approval from the, the postal service to do that. We'll also be screening in our air conditioning units, just so that you don't see that from the street. And then placing some extra requirements on our building material using cementitious fiberboard, just making it kind of darker, like you see in that picture, to give a nice accent and beginning it from the base. So you don't get a bunch of spotty hardy board along your elevations. And then being particular which, which building materials we use that in conjunction with. So fencing, another important thing to, to think through is we've, we're going to do wood fencing throughout the subdivision, except where you butt open space. That's going to be open metal, just so you'll be able to enjoy that view from your backyard since the property is, is beautiful. We want to make sure our residents can enjoy that too from their, their homes. Got height requirements on those and we're going to make sure that it's uniformed. So you don't have different color fencing when you're adjacent to another lot. And then we're also going to be doing some perimeter fencing near Clutz and FM 550 where we use masonry columns in conjunction with the open metal fencing or, or wood fencing. Neighborhood amenities, these are all going to be HOA maintained. So these are in addition to the park amenities, which we'll go over in, in a minute. You've got over three point with our latest plan, over three, three miles of eight foot hike and bike trail. We're going to be adding a rest, rest area, kind of in the central part of our subdivision with the view that overlooks the creek. And then we'll have some low water crossings, just as the trail meanders through the floodplains. There's some streams in there that's a little, be building some little pedestrian bridges. Added three ponds with walking trails and benches around them, kind of a more modern, high quality material playground with more of a neutral coloring scheme. And then as Fabrice touched on, we will be dedicating 47 acres of parkland to the city. That's over on the west side of our development off of Smith Road. We are going to be making all the improvements as the developer, the city will own and maintain the park only after the improvements are made and dedicated to the city and the city accepts them. And then developer to improve and dedicate the parkland prior to the issuance of any COs for phase two A. So basically we can't continue on with our development until we've lived up to our promise to get that city park and, and dedicated to the city. So these are the amenities that we're contemplating for the park and required in our development agreement. We'll have plenty of parking spaces, signage, a nice pickleball court, which will look really great. It is going to look how it looks in that picture with the homes fronting the court. So you're not going to, it's not going to be tucked behind some, some fences or anything. It's going to be a nice feature for that, that area. We'll have the pavilion or shade structure, just focal points for the community to gather in and, or throw birthday parties or something like that. Picnic tables, grills. We will be including a fishing dock, benches, trash cans and waste stations for pets. So Clutz Road, this was a big addition to our project. You've got the road being improved from Smith to Highway 205. The timing constraints for us is we've got to finish it before we can get COs for any lots on our first phase. So we'll have, we'll be highly motivated to get that project done as, as quickly as possible. And in turn, the city is going to help us acquire, or they're going to lead the efforts in acquiring the right of way and easements that we need for construction. We are going to make the road 25 feet wide, back a curve to back a curve. So it will have curb and gutter and an underground storm system with eight inch thick pavements, eight inch thick pavement and subgrade. The drainage structures or drainage structures will remain in the, in the creek areas where they are. So we might need to jog the road over a few feet to, to line up with those existing structures. And then, and in turn, the city has agreed to waive our roadway impact fees for the development. Annexation, so you can see in red, that is the part of the track that we're going to be bringing into the city of McLennan-Chism, currently located in the ETJ. It's about 113 acres. It's conditioned upon our zoning and pit approval. And this development agreement serves as our annexation petition, which will be on one of the later agenda items for tonight. We are planning on doing a pit and I know that, that McLennan-Chism is familiar with, with these, so I won't get too in-depth with it, but essentially it enables the city to provide public improvements without burdening residents outside the boundaries of this, this district. So it's exclusively paid for by assessments from members or residents within Willow Creek. The city will issue the bonds and then the proceeds are used to reimburse us for eligible public improvements. And kind of the next steps for the process will be, tonight will be the petition, which outlines our intention to create the district. Then we will come back on 12/9 for the actual creation meeting. And then we'll work with P3 Works and the city to create a service and assessment plan. Then once we get everything plotted, we'll levy the assessments on the individual lots. And then we, as the developer, will construct and, and pay for all the improvements. And then the city will issue the bonds, which the proceeds will be used to reimburse us. So now for the product, these are, these homes are Shattuck and we've got a lot of different builders in these slides, but we intend on doing really high quality product, which we'll be able to accomplish because our lots are 110 feet. So you'll have the option to do really wide homes and, and quality products, just like we're doing over in Ridge Point Estates. So these ones are, are pretty fancy. Got a few Windsor in there. Another acre lot product or 100 foot. These are some pictures from Toll Brothers, new houses going up, the interior. So you've got the, the really nice open concept living rooms, bedrooms, nice foyers and bathrooms. All right. In closing, so we were bringing a, a unique, highly amenitized residential development featuring high quality product. This agreement locks in high quality building standards, such as the 80% masonry requirement. We'll be dedicating a park for a beautiful public gathering space, which will include various amenities, over three miles of hike and bike trail. And it will provide the catalyst for about $4.3 million of improvements for Clutz Road, which will improve both traffic flow and safety. We did get a positive recommendation from staff for each agenda item and we respectfully request your support and a favorable vote.
Thank you, Ty. Councilmember London, do you have any questions?
Um, so, okay, I'm, I'm one of the guys that's anti-density. So I see what you're building. I like the, the fact that you have the 110 and the 100, you know, foot. I moved from a city that had 57,000 people in the same square mileage that McLennan-Chism has, and it started like this. It started with small on larger lots and then eventually it, it turned. I'm not saying that's going to happen. So that's why I have reservations. I like what I'm hearing. I, I, I brought it up with council about some of my questions about some of the, the resolutions and things that we would be passing and what type of authority we'd be giving up on some zoning and things. But that was clarified with our city attorney. So I appreciate you all working with them. And I wasn't involved in those conversations, so I do appreciate everything that you're doing. I, when I hear about, you know, three plus miles of hike and bike trails and acres upon acres of parkland, and then it's going to be handed over to the city, I think city dollars has to, you know, go to pay for that. And while I do appreciate what you're doing with Clutz Farm and what you're doing with other things, I, I don't know. I, I'm just looking at, you know, we're, we're adding more burden on to city residents for paying for some of these things.
Just one small clarification. So the only thing that the city will be maintaining is a public park. We, the HOA will be maintaining all the trails and the open space, along with all the sidewalk in the right of way, which actually it's, it's, it's typical for the city to maintain sidewalk within the public right of way. We're, we're taking on that extra burden with our HOA.
No, and I, I appreciate that and thank you for clarifying that. But I, I'm, I'm always cautious when I see anything that has a density feel, look to it. And it's, it's almost like fun with numbers, being creative with, we've got this whole big project, all these big acres, and we're going to give this much towards open space. And then we're going to cram all the homes onto the smaller space. So that's, that's where I've, I'm, I'm coming from with that. And that's just my personal experience in the past. I do like the look of what you've presented. And I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I'm just, I'm, I don't know. I, I see it as a lot of density sitting in one small area and, and I get where you're coming from, but anyway, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Tary.
Yeah. So I, I did want to address the, the, the concrete situation because I had, remember when we had spoke, we talked about shooting for eight inch, minimum seven, but I noticed now it's saying minimum six. Did that change since we spoke?
No. So I think the ordinance as it stands right now is for collector roads. So basically our perimeter roads, that's when their requirement is eight inches. Now for residential roads, the requirement in the subdivision ordinance is seven inches, but that is a little bit in our experience strict for thickness. So we talked with staff about if we get, if the geotech report says that the soil conditions don't really warrant an extra upsized concrete section, that we could go to six inches if Dub signs off on that and we get that in the report. But otherwise it will be seven inches and everything will be in line with the subdivision ordinance.
Okay. And then I just, just a comment, I mean, as far as, because you know, I had the same reservation with parks and stuff, you know, I know that it's, it does cost city money to keep up with, but I also feel like as we grow as a city, we want to start bringing some of these things in. And, and, and I think we're going to have to, as we, as we grow, we're going to have to realize that some things come with costs. And I, I think when I, when I see the layout for this park, I think that being, especially being one of the, for the, it is the first public park that we have, that I think is, this is one of those that I'm, I'm okay with the cost for this, but I do understand the concern. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Tary. Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah. And I appreciate the meetings we've had on this and the flexibility, I think on both sides on trying to come up with a, a, a good product for the feel of McLennan-Chism. Does it have everything that we would want? Probably not. I don't think it has everything they would ideally want either, but I think it's a good compromise between the two. We have some good sized lots that give you a good feel for, you know, the spirit, I would say the spirit of the comprehensive plan. And the amenities that are being offered up in terms of a park, in terms of the trails, is all the things that we've done surveys, people talk about, they talk about more. is all the things that we've done surveys, people talk about, they talk about more about having trails than anything else. This is going to be a trail system that's going to connect with Legacy, correct?
Yep.
And to a future school. It's quality-of-life stuff. And I think the positives outweigh any negatives that may come through, and I usually don't say this about developers, but I have a good feeling with this particular developer that what they say they're going to do, they're going to do. So I'll just leave it at that.
Man, Ty, you should write that one down.
I know, record that one.
Yeah. Councilmember Dean?
I agree with Jerry. I think, I think that both sides are given, given some leeway on getting to the final product here. I do like the wide lots, there's no doubt about that. We'll see if, if we like the parks as much as we think we're going to like the parks. But yeah, I appreciate how you're kind of working with us, and thanks, really.
Councilmember Goodwin?
I have a couple of questions for Jeff and Fabrice. Do you guys have an estimate on what it's going to cost to fix Clutz? If we do it?
Do we know approximately how much it's going to cost to fix Clutz?
If we do it?
Don't remember off the top. I do have that information, but not, not right here with me.
I do have a slide in here that has the breakdown, if you'd be interested in looking at that.
If you could pull that up, I'm going to try to go off of my memory. Were we not, like in the, and this is memory, 3.6 or somewhere in there?
No, it was definitely more than that. The problem is on the CIP, where we had Clutz priced out, it was as priced out as a four-lane divided road, because that is the end result in our thoroughfare plan. So we do not, it wasn't based on the two lanes, which basically what they're proposing is the start of that four-lane divided road that it will eventually be, according to our thoroughfare plan. But I want to say there was two separate segments, and I want to say it was, don't quote me on this, but I want to say it was more than 13 or 14 million for the whole project, again, for all four lanes.
And that's with the four lanes, thoroughfare plans. So, Ty, correct me if I'm wrong, on your slide, you're showing the projected 4.36 million in cost for Clutz?
That's correct, and that's layering in some financing costs, too, because it's going to take about 10 to 15 years until we're able to collect all the roadway impact fees that we would be paying. So without the finance costs, you're about $3.5 million for the two lanes, and that includes everything from like driveway repairs to the subgrade, seeding these lots, so if we disturb any soils, we'll be going to put in new grass and all bonding, testing, the storm system, kind of an all-in figure here.
Okay, I'm going to turn it back over to Councilmember Goodwin. Thank you.
You guys just added another layer of complexity. We're only doing two lanes now, and it's going to four. We're going to be responsible for adding two more lanes down the road. We will be.
Eventually, yes, the city would be responsible for that in the future.
Okay, that's in our thorough plan regardless. Okay. So we are giving up $4 million in impact fees to get a $4 million?
It'll be, it'll be less than that. We won't recapture all the costs through our impact fees. Total impact fees is 3.4-ish million, so we're still coming out of pocket for...
So just for the record, we're giving up 3.4 in impact fees to get a $4.3 million road. Is that correct? And for that, they're getting to build almost 100 more lots, all right? Or 30? 30 more lots? Kind of moving on, warranties on the underground sewer and roads, we're going to have to take these over at some point?
The infrastructure will be dedicated to the city upon completion and inspection, yes.
The roads, when they're done, they will be given to us?
Yes. I mean, they'll be under bond for two years, I believe, is what's typically...
So you guys are going to build out these roads, two years later, they're going to be on us to take care of?
Yes.
It almost mirrors the same pit with Sonoma Verde, same, same thing, pit or Sonoma Verde has.
A lot of this mirrors Sonoma Verde. I'm trying to figure out what McLendon-Chisholm is getting for this. What, when I go sit in front of my constituents on Wednesday, I can say, why is this a good deal? I'm trying to figure that out. So, think back to our budget. When I really said we need to stick to the acre lot minimum financially, or this, we are creating a bigger problem down the road, this is just adding to that, it's just got a nicer bow on it. So I'm having a hard time figuring out how this is going to benefit our town. I'm done.
Councilmember Powers?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, appreciate it. I just have some pretty simple questions here. What do you, I know you have multiple builders, multiple-size lots, multiple-size homes. What do you anticipate the price range being?
Yes, I can take you through that, too. I believe I had one more slide on this, the projected price points. So these are going to be really quality product, they'll be price, it's kind of starting from the mid-700s on your smaller lots, which will go with different options that the user can tack on or customize, it'll be getting up into the high-800s. And then for your larger lots, I mean, you'll go from the 800s to 900s, and then estates, 800s to a million-plus, high-800s to a million-plus. So I know on Ridge Point, we have homes that are in the 1.2 million, high 1.2 range, and really, we're going to have the same building pad on all these homes as we did on Ridge Point, so you'll be able to do the same product. So it's really kind of up to the market to dictate the price, but they're going to be pretty, pretty good price lots.
Yeah, now, this is kind of what, just the general thing, not with, I'm sorry, not with upgrades, darn, upgrades and so forth.
Yeah.
So they're almost as expensive as across the street?
Correct.
But not quite?
Not quite, and that's due to just less of a yard. I mean, these lots will still have a good yard, they're half-acre lots, but the Ridge Point ones are full acres, so that's kind of the price difference that the user would get a little bump from having the bigger yard.
Okay, and then the other question, this 47-acre park, you didn't, you did not mention that there would be, you know, soccer fields or softball fields or anything like that. Would the, if we wanted to add such things later, does the, would the terrain accommodate that?
It is pretty flat. I'd say your slopes run between 1 to 4%, so you definitely will have the ability to do some grading, as long as you're not filling in with a bunch of dirt and benching in pads that way, you kind of have to cut it more, because you do have a lake over there, so that lake has some storage. But yes, as long as it's not any kind of building structures, you'll be able to put any kind of sports fields, softball fields, soccer fields in there, not a problem at all.
Okay, so they should be, the drainage should be all right for that?
Correct, it'll all drain to the lake, so, yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to clarify a couple of things real quick. Is everyone, everybody done? Okay, so on the, the roads, on the roads within the community, that is, if Dub signs off on six-inch, so if our engineer signs off on six-inch because he says the soil can maintain that, then that would be a six-inch road if it doesn't, if he doesn't sign off on it, then it is going to be a seven-inch.
Correct, it will be a seven-inch if he doesn't sign off on it, or if Dub says, hey, this road needs to be an eight-inch road, the soils are that bad, then we have language in our DA that says we will, we are willing to go above seven inches on that road. So even though the subdivision ordinance says seven inches, that's something we talked about with staff, that we will go higher if we need to.
Yeah, and I mean, because the understanding or the concern, seven-inch road, obviously better than a six-inch road, eight-inch road, better than a seven-inch road, and so on, but because if they do come into the city, and we're the ones now responsible for it after the two years, and it's a six-inch road, now all of a sudden, that, that cost does increase. I know that we are looking to create more of a public works, and Councilmember Towery is looking at that over, and so I know we're going to be more prepared in a few years where if we haven't, but I just want to make sure that that is only if our engineer signs off on it. It's not just something that the city's saying, man, go knock out a six-inch road. That's because the soil samples were done, everything was looked at, and our engineer agreed.
Yep, you're absolutely right, and then we will also be hiring our own engineer to assess the soils and give a recommendation, too. So not only does Dub have to say that it supports a six-inch road, our engineer as well has to sign and seal a plan, so you've got two protections, two levels of protection there.
Okay.
And then, one point I'd like to add on the Clutz Road situation is that, just due to the nature of being a developer, we have relationships with these contractors, and we are able to get much better pricing than would be a city contract, so there's going to be some pretty significant cost savings there. Like just, for example, I think Fabrice or Jeff said that it'd be around 13 million to do both lanes. We're projecting around 4 million to do half of it, so 4.3 million to do half of it, or 3 million without any financing costs, so you're going to see some, recognize some pretty large savings there.
And then, just want to make sure I clarify on when, and we did have several meetings on this, and one of the main concerns we were all concerned with in the beginning, to Councilmember London's concerns, was the density. And if I remember correctly, in the beginning of this, we were, we were higher, if I remember correctly, not higher in the number, but I guess...
We had less lots.
Less lots, higher in the acreage size, I guess.
We were, we were under the 1.0.
We were under the 1, 1.0, we were under the 1.0.
We were under 1.0, yes, correct.
So what happened in some of those negotiations, in full transparency, is this council, right here, we all agreed roads was our number-one priority. So if there was a, if roads were our number-one priority, and we all agreed on that, and if I remember in the survey, roads were also a high priority. Jeff, is that correct?
Yeah, if I remember correctly, roads were number-one of the people that responded to it as their...
Right.
...biggest concern.
So the reason I had the Mayor Pro Tim and Councilmember Towery with me in these meetings was because, one, I need the Mayor Pro Tim there, but if Councilmember Towery is overlooking the public works, and we're talking with the county on trying to figure out how to get our roads done, and that's our number-one priority, that body that met, including with staff, was how do we make the roads happen on Clutz Road? Clutz Road is in need of repair, and it's not in need of a reclaim, it's in need of concrete, and I know the thoroughfare plan at one point will get us to a four-lane road, but at this point, it's going to be two lanes, but it's going to be concrete. And if I remember correctly, we are also in that construction, preparing for when we do have to go to the four-lane road, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So that was, that was put in there. But to increase it by 33 homes to get the overall goal of roads, we said 33 homes was okay, because we were able to get Clutz Road, and for the folks that travel Clutz Road, as well as our first responders and so on, it was, it was important for us to get that. And I feel we were able to make, to achieve that.
Yeah, I would agree.
If I remember correctly, so, and the timeliness, thank you, Pro Tim, I remember the first meeting, just so people know, first meeting, they came back, we were upwards of six years for Clutz Road, and I was like, huh, I'm not going to go to the people and say it's going to be six years, because that would not make sense. And so we actually walked away, if I remember, we were like, hey, we're good, we'll figure it out. And a couple of weeks later, we sat back down, and we came up with some other plans, and that's how we landed on Clutz Road. It wasn't like we just went out and said, man, if you fix Clutz, we'll do this. There was a very detailed process, and I appreciated the work by staff and Councilmember Towery and Mayor Pro Tim. So I just wanted to speak on those, so people who are here tonight or watching understand that this was not just a very quick deal. There were, if I remember correctly, correctly, there was even a last-minute phone call to me on a Friday. And we had to navigate that to Fabrice to make sure that we got that meeting done before a deadline. So that's all I have, I just wanted to make sure I clarified any, anything. Councilmember Towery?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, because I've said this before, I'm not in favor of developing a city on the back of developers at the expense of us losing our, our feel of the city, right? I don't, you know, AK, sellout. So that was my mindset in these negotiations. I do think that sometimes there is some negotiating that is, that is required. I felt confident when I saw the final thing here, that this was something that I thought we could present to council, that, you know, when you see the lot sizes, when you see the houses, this resembles some very, very close to what we want in the city, again, my feel, and something that I thought that we could, you know, at the expense of, I think it was 33 additional houses, we were able to get some roads done. So, you know, with full transparency, that was what my mindset was on it, but I understand some hesitation.
And lastly, the 47 acres on the park, is that correct?
Forty-seven, approximately.
Okay, so 47 acres on the park, and I appreciate Councilmember London's concern, but at some point, we have to, we're a city that's growing, and, you know, and I had a conversation with our city manager, Fabrice, you know, to be able to say we have a city park is not a bad thing. And the way that we talked about this park being done, yes, you are putting things in that will provide a park, but actually a low cost to maintain. And that was because we were concerned, we weren't just going to throw things out there that we were going to spend thousands of dollars a year to maintain. The things we asked for in the park gave us the park, but low maintenance of the park. And then you have Councilmember Goodwin, who oversees the parks, which is why, oddly enough, in the mail came this humongous book today that I asked for, for him to have, so that he can start looking at park stuff, but that's, that's, there was a lot of work, though, is what I guess I'm at. Does anyone have any final questions, since we've taken a motion on this before we go to a vote?
I do. I just, we got to look further, and I just want to point something out. I know roads and trails are important, and we heard about that on the survey, but one thing I've heard about time and time again, and I'm being encouraged to fight for, is density. And one, somebody showed up tonight and actually spoke about it. People care about density, and we are looking at fighting density. I think we have to listen to what people are asking for and what people are saying, and people are quite honestly tired of this place being overbuilt. And yes, this is a better job, and this looks nice, and you guys have done a great job. I mean, this looks great, Sonoma Verde, much better. But I've also got to look at the numbers, and when I'm doing the tax revenue, when this is fully built out, it's only going to bring in $250,000 a year in taxes. It's not a stretch to say it's probably going to cost the city more than that in services. This is going, we're making the problem worse, guys.
We've had the motion in a second. If there's no other discussion, I will call for a vote by a show of hands. All those in favor, say aye. Show that five opposed. By show of hands, two nays. So 5-2, motion passes on 8.4. We swapped them. 8.3, discuss and consider approval of an ordinance annexing approximately 113.676 acres of land situated in the K Latham Survey, abstract number 133, and the R Pegham Survey, abstract 175, in Rockwall County, Texas, located in the city's ETJ extraterritorial jurisdiction and to the corporate limits of the City of McLendon-Chisholm, and approving the annexation service plan. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, let's open for discussions. City manager?
With this add item, the owner of the developer, Willow Creek 360 LP, submitted a petition requesting voluntary annexation of 113.676 acre portion of its property located within the city's ETJ. The tract is contiguous to existing city limits and lies, and is located south of FM 550 between Smith Road and State Highway 205. Staff does recommend approval of this, of this item.
Okay, thank you. And this is still the same... And this is still the same topic. Basically, all we're doing now is just basically, um, annexing the ETGA, ETJ part.
Yes, sir.
Correct, okay. Mr. London? Mr. Towery? Mayor Pro Tim? All right, um, by a show of hands, all those in favor, say aye. Six opposed. Six-one, motion carries. Eight point five, same topic. Discuss and consider a resolution accepting and approving a petition for the establishment of Willow Creek Public Improvement District Pid within the corporate limits of the city, making findings as to the sufficiency of the petition and directing that a public hearing be scheduled and notice given. I'll entertain a motion on this one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, open for discussion. Mr. London? Okay, so this isn't on a Pid now, so the.
It's a, it's a companion item.
Yeah, it's a companion item.
Establishing the Public Improvement District, which would be, uh, used to fund the public infrastructure.
And it'll be on the twelve-nine agenda, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
That's correct.
So this is just basically saying that we're doing the petition for the public hearing, correct? Okay.
That's correct.
Uh, Mr. Towery, do you have anything? Just another companion, I don't know. Mr. Dean?
Just so I'm clear, what, what's on the twelve-nine agenda regarding this?
This is, this is a petition to establish the Public Improvement District. We'll, we'll have to come back on the December ninth council meeting with the actual, uh, it'll be a resolution, um, actually establishing the Public Improvement District. So in other words, this is them saying we're, we would like, we're interested in establishing a Public Improvement District. If approved, then staff will come back with an item to actually have one established.
It's exactly what Mr. Davis did, um, about a couple of months ago when he presented his for, uh, Sonoma Verde. And then they came back and they had the period hearings, same thing.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Goodwin? Mr. Powers?
Uh, yeah, this might be preliminary or too, you know, too soon, but do you have an idea of what it, the Pid will cost per home? Do you have that figure yet or is that to be developed?
So we are going to set the tax rate equivalent at seventy-five cents per a hundred dollars of assessed, or of assessed value. So that's in line with what Sonoma Verde, um, is, the assessments are for, for their homes and in line with the market as well. So that's.
That's seventy-five per, per hundred?
Seventy-five cents per hundred dollars of value.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion by show of hands. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Show five-two, motion carries. Thank you, Ty.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all. Um, it is seven fifty. Uh, I'm going to take just a five-minute recess so we can use the restroom and then we will be back for the next item.
So did, did I understand him correctly? So if you, if you had.
Yeah.
It is seven fifty-seven and we are going to call back to order from recess. Thank you for your patience. That brings us up to item eight point six. Discuss and consider a resolution authorizing the award of request for proposal RFP twenty twenty-five dash zero six dash ten to Berghauser Construction, I hope I said that correct, for the remodel of the former fire station into a new city annex. I'll entertain a motion on eight point six.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's open for discussion and I believe there are representatives from Berghauser Construction here, correct? You two guys and, uh, Fabrice?
I'll go ahead and defer this item to Finance Director, Mr. White.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five council meeting, council directed staff to issue a RFP for the remodel of the old former fire station to be converted into a new city annex. Project will provide dedicated space for Public Works Department and the Accounting Clerk. RFP was issued on October sixth, twenty twenty-five and closed on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Two proposals were received, one from Berghauser Construction and one from PCBM Facility Management. Berghauser Construction submitted the lowest bid totaling three hundred and ten thousand dollars. The scope of work includes interior framing and finish out, installation of new entry doors, windows, flooring, trim and hardware, as well as the build out of a kitchenette and full interior drywall insulation and painting. Electrical upgrades will bring all systems up to current code with new outlet switches and network ports. Plumbing work includes complete rough in and top out for all systems. Exterior improvements include building repainting, construction of a reinforced forty by forty concrete parking lot with one ADA compliant space and installation of a five hundred gallon aerobic septic system. Additional site work includes grading, gravel drive and storage pad installation and an eight-foot iron fence. The project also includes installation of, of a new two-ton HVAC system with ductwork and associated electrical connections. Uh, the project would be funded from the General Fund Reserve, which we've talked about our excess in reserves that we have. And I have Rodney and Adam Berghauser from Berghauser Construction here in the audience, if you guys do have any questions for them.
Before I go to questions, thank y'all and y'all's patience. I never know how long the presentations are going to be or I may have moved this around a little bit for you guys. So I apologize. Uh, Councilmember London?
Thank you, and obviously, um, our questions and everything that we have can also extend on that time. So definitely appreciate all your patience. Thank you for the, the proposal.
Is this the one? Councilmember Towery?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be recusing myself from this.
So, um, Councilmember Towery has recused himself from this, so if we can make note of that. Mayor Pro Tim?
No, I appreciate the bid. Uh, it looked fairly complete to me and, uh, if, uh, I'm always, if the staff is good with it, then I'll, I'm going to be good with it. And, uh, you know, this is our first step to, this purpose of this building is, Fabrice, you want to tell what the purpose of this building is going to be for?
As, uh, Mr. White mentioned, the purpose of this building would be, so remodeling the old fire station to house the Public Works Department as well as the, um, accountant position, which would be, which will be hired here in the near future.
Yeah, and then I was just going to say, that's the whole purpose of this. We're, uh, trying to, in order to accommodate some of the services like public works and roads, uh, we have to have a place to put the equipment and to have the staff. And, uh, we found, uh, Ms. Stevens, uh, in her role as the interim city manager and then Fabrice as well and Jeff, uh, they all kind of got together and this is what they found this, we have this old firehouse and we can redo it. Uh, and I, I think it's a, it's a good deal for the city, so.
Well put. Well put, Mayor Pro Tim. Yep. Uh, the Councilmember Dean?
Just, uh, this was a topic during the budget workshop ti, uh, and, and at that time, were we thinking General Fund Reserve is where we were going to be using it? Yeah.
Yes, sir, that's the only way we can fund a project like this.
Uh, okay, all right, very good.
Councilmember Goodwin?
So you said accounting is going to go over there?
The long-term, it's more of a public works, but temporarily, we had thought about putting the accounting clerk over there just due to space here. Although we are.
This is a clerk that will be doing billing with the ERP.
You, yes, some part of their role will be the utility billing, although we will not be taking cash over there for safety concerns. Um, but they could be potentially, residents could drop off checks and things like that to pay if they wanted.
Okay. Um, yeah, so this is kind of necessary, I guess we can, I think all we have left is a closet, right? I, I don't think that'd be good to.
At this moment, that is accurate.
Yeah, so, uh, and, and I think that's important because I know a lot of people were kind of upset about the sewer stuff and, uh, that's kind of a way hopefully we can lower some sewer bills, so, um, yeah, all right.
Councilmember Powers?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to know, you two gentlemen showed up here tonight, was there anything you definitely wanted to say or did you just want to answer questions? Okay. I just want to make sure if you hadn't prepared a speech, we didn't stop you from doing your speech. All right, fair enough.
So, so a couple of things. One, um, if this is approved, when would this project begin?
It would be as soon as the, received the notice to proceed, which should be immediately.
And. Okay. That's what I want to hear. That is good because what the goal is, and I'm sure you're catching on, is we're trying to move things in-house so that we can save money. So yes, we are spending the three hundred and ten thousand, but the savings in the long term is going to allow us to have our own, uh, person who is able to, uh, maintain, uh, the mowing because we've now have a tractor, we have a place to house it. Um, the ERP billing that I believe our Finance Director Jeff has been working on for at least a year, if not longer, uh, to move that in-house. Again, another savings that can actually be passed on to the citizens of our community is, Councilmember Goodwin just pointed out, uh, because we're not having to pay that overage. So the sooner this begins, this is something that we can start maybe passing back out to the community and it may take some time, but I think we can eventually land there. Um, and, um, lastly, how long does this, do you foreshadow this project taking?
We're asking between eighteen and twenty weeks, just because of the weather delays coming in the winter time and knowing the fact that the fence is charging and the weather traffic facility is eighty, eight to ten weeks.
Eight to ten, okay.
To get the fencing material here, not to do the installation. And we kind of have to get the fencing laid out before we can do the storage lot because you want to make sure you get your gravel and stuff inside of your storage fence so you don't have it on the outside. It's not easy.
Makes sense, okay.
We're an all company, we do all the additional startup and just leave us on site moving ourselves. We have some that do certain parts of it, but a large part of the product, we will do personally on site.
Okay, so eight, you said eight to ten weeks or did I miss eighteen to twenty?
Eighteen to twenty.
Eighteen to twenty, okay. No, yeah, I think you said it, I, it's a long day. Um, too much cake. Um, okay, I, I'm, I'm good. So I know Jeff has a setup where we can take the vote on the, uh, panel box, so I'll let him set that up and, uh, we will have one abstain and the rest will vote. All right, we'll see you Monday. Thank you all again for your patience, I do apologize.
What, you can't start tomorrow?
Yeah, Veterans Day. Thank y'all, appreciate you. That brings up eight point eight, discuss and consider, and, I'm sorry, thank you, eight point seven. Discuss and consider authorizing the purchase of furniture, fixtures and other related needs for the new city annex building with funding to be provided from the General Fund Reserve in an amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty cents. I'll entertain a motion on this one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and this is also another tag along to what we just voted on? Okay, and this is also another tag along to what we just voted on for the annex building. I'm gonna let the Finance Director Jeff take this.
Thank you, Mayor. So City Council just approved the RFP for the remodel of the former fire station. This agenda item is requesting the funds that would be needed to get the building up and running and furnished. Includes items such as furniture fixtures and equipment, installation of wiring for networking, access controls for security, security cameras, a generator so that we have backup power if we have storms, all those things that go along with it. In your packet, there is a breakdown, I itemized these items by supplier. We did add a, to this number from the quotes that I received from a variety of vendors, we did add a ten percent contingency, as is typical in something like this, to have some sort of contingency fund just in case there are things that we did not come up with, but.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember London, do you have anything, actually, hold on real quick, Chief, do you have anything on this? Being that it's, you, you, you don't wanna keep housing equipment, you don't wanna have anything on the furniture, so you.
So as much as we love Mark and Sean, yeah, it would be nice to get that equipment out of there. But as far as this line item, Jeff kinda reached out on some line items. We tried to come up with anything we could think of and backup generators, desks, I didn't listen to everything that he mentioned, but yeah, I, I think it's necessary for the building anyway.
Saw the copy, Councilmember London?
I mean, it just kinda makes sense overall, it's not like it's a Christmas wish list, if we could get everything, what would we do with it? Where would we put it? Oh, put it in the new annex building. This is, you know, the, the needed equipment for them to do their jobs and to function and to have an actual, you know, habitable workspace. So I'm all for it.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you pointing that out because they, as I believe Councilmember Powers just pointed out, the closet or Councilmember London, one of y'all did, Councilmember Goodwin, I apologize. Can't house them in a closet and the fire station's running out of room even over there, so we gotta get them moved around. So back to you, Councilmember Towery.
Could you tell me, what did we end up figuring out on the cost for that generator?
So actually, on Friday, Mr. Berghauser connected with the gentleman that had originally quoted us forty-three thousand dollars for a, for a generator. And between the two of us, we were able to explain to him what we actually need and the cost will now come in around ten grand. Which is, which is what, which is what I had on here at the beginning. There was a slight heart attack when he came back with forty-three grand.
Yeah, I heard that.
So he was trying to quote us for a full-on commercial generator, which is not what we need over there.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Glad we saved money there. Mayor Pro Tem? Councilmember Dean?
No.
Councilmember Goodwin?
I'm good.
Councilmember Powers? Good, alright, we will set up the vote again on this one. And that looks like it's gonna be unanimous, so, hold on. Now it's unanimous. Alright, item eight point eight. Discuss and consider approval of an ordinance reducing the speed limit along FM five fifty within the city limits between Rabbit Ridge Road and State Highway two oh five from fifty-five miles per hour to fifty miles per hour, consistent with the findings of the Techstat Speed Study. I'll entertain a motion on this one.
Sir, moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, and I believe there is somebody here if we need him, so I will turn this over to Fabrice.
Yes, sir, we have Mr. Wadlington here with us, area, oh, there you are. Area Engineering Manager from Techstat that will be here available to answer any questions you might have. But the, the current posted speed limit along FM five fifty from Rabbit Ridge to State Highway two oh five is currently fifty-five miles per hour. Techstat periodically conducts speed studies to ensure that the posted speed limits reflect actual driving conditions and promote safety of vehicles. As, as part of the Techstat Speed Zone Review Process, these study, these studies are typically performed every three to ten years. Techstat recently conducted a traffic engineering and speed study along FM five fifty between Rabbit Ridge and State Highway two oh five in conjunction with the design of a new traffic signal at the intersection of FM five fifty and Rabbit Ridge. The study, the study analyzed factors including speed limit, crash history, traffic volumes and roadway design features to determine whether the existing fifty-five miles per hour limit remains appropriate. Based on the results of the study, Techstat determined that a speed limit of fifty, of fifty miles per hour is more reasonable and safe for the current roadway and traffic conditions. With that, staff is recommending approval of this ordinance. I would invite Mr. Wadlington to come forward and answer any questions you might have at this time.
Yeah, and, and just real quick, quick before we go into questions, can you give an update as to why the, the study was done and why the reduction and what happens if the city says no to a reduction in speed? And then we'll go into questions.
Okay, so.
I know that was a three-part hit, so I apologize.
Okay, so make sure, so why we do them? So we basically go through every roadway every three, ten years and do a study of how people are actually driving on the road. And that's a speed study that gets performed and it dictates how fast they're driving. We go up, base it off of a eighty-five percentile speed, so people driving on the road, we take eighty-five percentile speed of everybody's driving, kinda get a basis of our, for our speed limit that way. It's not, takes into account, that's really why we do it. There are restrictions put on, do occurs on, curves on the road and stuff like that. Can you repeat the second part of the question?
When, well, I'll just make it really easier for us, just to make sure we're good. What is the impact if the city said no to reducing the speed? What, what that liability does?
So if y'all say no, it comes more of a discussion between us and y'all of, because y'all, y'all's limits kinda intertwined with the county. There are segments that are in the county and then how would we go about adjusting the speed limits there? Because we're fine reducing it at to fifty through the county sections, which is all on us. And, but we need to get y'all's concurrence because it kinda goes in between. If it was just one segment that y'all were outside of, it'd probably be a little more easier to separate them. But I think it's four segments in y'all's city limits, I believe is what it is.
What I'm trying to get at is before, so everyone understands why these things happen, because some people are gonna be like, why are we lowering the speed limit when it's, you know, we're trying to get where we need to go? The liability, if the city said no, if something happened, Techstat can be like, well, we did advise. Is that a correct statement or a little out there?
Yeah, no, it's partially true, but we could also be in state, tell you that we're going to reduce it no matter what, but.
Understood.
That's, that, we do wanna get y'all's concurrence and y'all's, and it's, and the limits.
Councilmember London?
No, I'm all for this, I've, I've talked to people that live up in that area and that whole Rabbit Ridge intersection, cars come flying up there and it's, it's pretty much a blind hill. You know, and if you're not paying attention, someone's coming out and they don't see you coming or sun's coming over the hill or whatever the case may be, I mean, I, I've heard people say that, you know, they have seen more accidents than they've seen ones that were near misses. And I mean, the only other thing that I would bring up is even if you go towards two oh five, Cattle Baron, I've heard people that live out in that area say, you know, cars come screaming down there trying to catch a, a green light knowing it's gonna turn yellow, thinking that, oh, I can, I can get through there. So I mean, this, five fifty's becoming almost like a little racetrack and, you know, coming up on the corner up on here before, right after Cattle Baron, if you come up on that S-turn and their speed limit's sixty. You know, you try taking that at night and, you know, if we're doing sixty and other people are doing eighty, you know, you're gonna have somebody fly off into those trees. So I'm, I'm all for reducing this from the public safety perspective and this one is one that I've heard a lot of people ask about, what are y'all gonna do, what are y'all gonna do? And, you know, thank you for coming and doing something, I'm all for it.
So, just kinda expand on a little bit, so what we're proposing, because we're proposing the signal there at the Rabbit Ridge.
Oh, a signal?
Yeah, there's, so a signal goes at Rabbit Ridge, so going through this process, we're designing it. So there would be turn lanes on five fifty at Rabbit Ridge, also installed as part of the signal installation. But interim in the proposal is when we get the speed limit reduced, we're gonna just do a four-way stop in the interim until the signals do come in and go that route.
Councilmember Towery?
Yeah, I'm, usually I'm in favor of increasing speed limits, but I, no, but I, I do, that is a, that's always been a very sketchy hill that, yeah, I, and plus, like you said, that hard turn down there late at night, I think just, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'm for it.
He does race cars, by the way, that's probably why. Just so people understand why he's for increased speed limits.
He also calls that a Tuesday.
Yep, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it, I think over time, naturally, the speed limits are gonna go even lower because as these subdivisions that are coming online to get in and out of five fifty is gonna require another traffic light. And so, I, I think I've told this story before, but I, I came from City Lovick. And so we would plan out roads and invariably people would complain when we plan out a road and there's nothing out there and people are driving eighty miles an hour and they complain about the speed of people out there. But we would tell them, over time, that's gonna slow down when you start seeing houses being built. And sure enough, because the intersections start being created because of those subdivisions, it's gonna slow down. So for this, I, I'm, I'm fine with it, it's just part of the natural progression of the growth along five fifty.
Councilmember Dean?
I think they even have science dentists down there that says blind hill. When I drove it this morning and I, and I don't know if anybody's seen what they're doing at Pullen and five fifty, there's gonna be a lot of cars, it's really gonna be slowed down. But what I really wanna know is that your department, it does outer loop? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's not on the agenda, so we're not talking that, so apologize. Anything else? Nope, Councilmember Goodwin?
Yeah, I just wanna probably echo Mayor Pro Tem, I, I think ultimately the speed limits are gonna end up lower, so yeah, we can, we can start here, but I think they're gonna end up lower.
Councilmember Powers?
And so I will echo what the mayor said, which is, when he asked about it, what would happen if we went against this and disregarded it, I think common sense tells you that when experts are telling you something, you should generally agree with them for that reason, it opens you to liability, it's just common sense. But if you can find a way to get people to actually obey the speed limit, that would be beneficial.
Well, there is a deputy in the back. Yes, Chief?
So, Mayor Pro Tem, we're kinda touched on this already, just based off of our density and our developments that are going in, this is something that, I don't know if we did or if they initiated this, this is something that we need to start initiating. I will tell you, I believe the speed limit on State Highway two oh five is the same speed limit as FM five fifty. So State Highway that runs through the middle of our city has the same speed limit as five fifty that goes next to our city hall, next to our fire station and past all of these subdivisions that are being built. So my opinion is based solely off of the population and the fact that we are inking all of these new developments, this is something that we should have initiated. And I can also add to that, we run more regs on FM five fifty than we run in any other roadway in our district.
Thanks, Chief. If we can set us up for a vote, all those in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's show that unanimous for those watching at home. That brings up eight point nine. Discuss and consider approving a resolution casting votes for candidates to serve on the Rockwall CAD, Rockwall Center Appraisal District Board of Directors for a two-year term beginning January one, twenty twenty-six. And I will turn this over to staff.
Mayor and Councilmember, this item here is regarding casting the ballot for, to fill the position, to fill the vacancy on the Rockwall Central Appraisal District Board of Director for Place Four and Five. You have in your packet, you can see that they've published the list of the nominees, which are David, forgive me if I mispronounce these names, David Billings, Anthony Crawford, Richard Cupkey and Cedric Thomas. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, that left is the staff recommendation at the sole discretion of City Council on this.
Can you explain on your report real quick that we have six total votes that we can cast? We can cast them all to one person, we can cast, appoint, a vote to one person and five to another and so on, is that correct? And how that works?
That is correct, I actually specifically did speak with the, with the CAD about this. They also said that you could, if you choose to, you could individually have different votes. You don't have to necessarily have a unanimous vote on this.
Correct, so what I, what I'm gonna do on this one is when we open this up for the vote, I'm gonna go down the line and just if you, we have six total votes, so you, you can't say, I want one here and five there, you just say the person you want it to go to or the persons you want it to go to and then we'll have to figure out how we divvy that up unless, is that correct? Okay, so, does, is there any discussion on this or is this one, I'm, kinda all makes sense? Or does anyone need to ask any questions on this for clarification? You good, are you, okay, go ahead, Mr. Goodwin, sorry.
How many of these are McLean Injus and Residence, because only one stands out, is there any more than that?
So there, so when we did ours, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we submitted, we as a council submitted Tony Crawford or listed as Anthony Crawford on here, I believe, what, two meetings? Two months ago, something like that, maybe? So two months ago, so we as a council already recommended our person to be on the ballot as Anthony Crawford, but now this is separate from that, we have to now cast, how many, we have six, so do we want them all to go to Tony Crawford? I can make this easy and say, if all in favor of all six votes going to Tony Crawford, say aye and we can call it a day right now, so is that, is, but how we did the motion, I wanna make sure we do it correctly. Do I need to remake a motion or do I need to say, I'll entertain a motion for all six votes to go to Tony Crawford? Would that cover us correctly? Or since we've already made a motion, I have to cancel that motion and then redo a motion?
If, if, if there is anybody that wants to vote differently than what your motion suggests, then at that point, I would suggest going.
Right, well, so the motion doesn't say a name, so what I'm gonna ask is, all those in favor of canceling out the last motion, by show of hands, say aye. Thank you, and then I will now entertain a motion that all six of our votes go to Anthony Crawford.
Sir, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, by show of hands, oh, apologize, yep, go ahead.
I don't know how the whole system works, if Tony's unavailable, what happens then? If all the votes go to him?
That's a CAD question.
Is there a backup for him or?
No, the, the CAD only meets, if I'm not mistaken, only a.
It is my understanding that they, that he stated that he, he will be available. He wouldn't be on here if he wasn't, if he wasn't available.
Okay.
It's my understanding.
Just wanted to see if there was a benefit to having a, a second person, apparently it's okay not to.
Oh, we can only, we can only nominate one, we cannot, so, so one of these folks is gonna get that. And so the hierarchy of it all is, so Rockwall may have X amount of votes, RISD has X amount of votes, Heath has X amount of votes that they can give. They can all give them to somebody else and that person has more votes. And it doesn't matter, that person's gonna win. So if whoever gets the most votes from all the councils in the I, RISD, and, and is the county involved in that too, or the counties involved? Yes, right. That's what I'm saying.
Think of it as an electoral college. It's like the electoral college where each group gets a certain number of votes.
So we're saying for, it's, for what we're saying is for McLennanism is our six votes, we're giving them to one person. Okay. So we did the motion in a second, so, uh, this will be by just a show of hands, just to make it quick. Since this is the last item, uh, all in favor, aye? Show that unanimous. Okay. That's gonna bring up, uh, council member reports and announcements. And, um, last week I forgot Jeff, so we're gonna start with Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Uh, I just wanted to give an update on delinquent utility accounts. So as, uh, you guys know, we mailed out certified letters to our top ten most delinquent, um, accounts. Um, four residents, when they received the bill or the day of RCH, um, going to shut off water, paid off their bill in full. That netted the city a total of twelve thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars right away. Um, the majority of the remaining residents made good faith payments and set up payment plans to get caught up. So we got a total of one thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars in good faith payments that day, bringing our total received between those two, uh, to almost fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. So as I mentioned, the majority of the rest of them got on, uh, payment plans. We did find out that two of the residents were actually new tenants. So the person whose name that was on the account was not living there, which we suspected we had some of those. Um, and the reason for that is if no one calls in to cancel their service and the new tenant doesn't call in to start service, Infomark doesn't know that there's a new person there. So, and that's why we want to get this caught up so that we can stay ahead of it and not get as far behind as it, as it was previously. So we have a total of, um, three prior account holders that will be sent to collections. The value of their three accounts is almost eight thousand dollars. Overall, like I said, we, we, we have received already to this point roughly fourteen thousand five hundred dollars with several more accounts that are on payment plans to get caught up over time. The next ten account holders that we would like to send letters to have a combined balance of just under seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Actually spoke with Robin Mayall, Mayall over at RCH this morning and am waiting for him to give me a date that we can put on the letter that the, uh, that those account holders, water would be shut off if they were not to, to pay their bill in advance or, or contact us to pay their bill in advance.
Thank you. Um, Peyton? Chief?
Going to assume that you're going to speak about our event tomorrow? Good. Um, the only other thing I have is the administrative assistant for the fire department has been hired. Her name is Shelby Lee. Um, anybody that's going to attend the event tomorrow, she is planning on being there. So she was gonna come to council tonight and I couldn't. I didn't feel it was right to have her stay here until eight o'clock at night, so.
Does seem darker with the time change. Councilmember London?
Uh, yes, so as we've discussed and as many people know and anybody who's on Facebook, today's Marine Corps birthday. So happy birthday to all my fellow Marines, uh, past, present, and those who are in the Cadet Corps. Cause the Marine Corps JROTC, uh, through Rockwall ISD did an incredible job last night at their Marine Corps Ball, uh, celebrating two hundred and fifty years of outstanding courage, uh, honor and commitment to this country. Tomorrow, as we know it, is Veterans Day. And, uh, there are plenty of things for veterans to take advantage of. But just remember, this is our time to just thank a veteran, if you know one. Um, just, especially for our Vietnam veterans, those who were not welcomed home. Uh, if you see them, you know, and a lot of times they're just wearing a hat or maybe a shirt or there's a bumper sticker on a car or truck. Just, just say thank you and welcome home. And even though it's a couple decades late, they appreciate it. Um, also, I always talk about Toys for Tots. Toys for Tots is going on throughout the city. It's going on throughout the county. And, uh, there's events that are coming up. Check Rockwall Toys for Tots and you'll, um, you'll find all the event locations. They also have a link now on the Toys for Tots website, which will show you to all the Dropbox locations. And I believe we have one here in the city or fire station, that's right. And city hall, okay. And then I'm not gonna steal the Christmas Village, but I'll let the mayor talk about that.
Councilmember Towery?
Yeah, so, sorry, Chief, I meant to let you know, I was gonna cut him off guard, he hates this. Um, we spoke a little bit, I just wanted to let people know that we are in progress, uh, working towards, um, ALS response on the Engines ALS engines. And I think you're, we're working on that, right? With, uh,
Yes, so I believe Fabrice has got me on the agenda for the next meeting to give everybody a briefing on that.
Oh, good, I'm good, I caught that, alright.
Catch up, catch up.
Mayor Protem?
We got an emergency services committee meeting a week from tomorrow or a week from Wednesday. Um, and, uh, I appreciate all veterans. My father was a Vietnam veteran, a pilot. Um, and my grandfather also flew in World War Two. So, uh, uh, it, it is a special day.
Councilmember Dean? Councilmember Goodwin?
Um, I just wanted to remind everybody, we're still looking for volunteers for the, uh, park and trail board. Uh, so if anybody's interested, reach out to me or reach out to staff. Uh, also, uh, Wednesday, the twelfth council, uh, breakfast with council at Rosa's, seven thirty to nine AM, um, and special guest, Chief Stowe. So, uh, come on out and let's have a discussion. We can chat about whatever's important to you. I'm sure Eddie will have some awesome updates for us too.
Councilmember Powers?
Uh, yes, as the, uh, fire department liaison from the council, I had a, a meeting scheduled with the fire chief this afternoon at one o'clock, and I didn't even get to sit down when a fire call came in. And he was gracious enough to let me ride along in, in the shotgun seat, which was even better. Um, and, uh, got to witness our fire department in action. There was an actual working fire, uh, fire, uh, a fireplace and attic fire. And I believe it was Heath, Rockwall, and Roy City who showed up to the party. Is that correct? So nobody got injured, fire went out, house is still standing. That is the desired outcome. Um, I also had a chance to meet with Mitch Ownby, I think that's right, Mitch, right? I met with him this morning for about thirty minutes and talked about that very thing, Eric, about the ALS. And I was gonna talk with you about that today. So I am, uh, we got to reschedule our meeting, but I'm glad to hear that things are moving in a posi, a positive direction on that, that's exciting. So, uh, thank you for all that. Thank you to the good work that your people did today, saving that house.
Thanks, sir.
Fabrice?
Uh, do, so the city, uh, city offices, city hall will be closed tomorrow in observation of Veterans Day. Uh, I do want to take this opportunity also to just say thank you to all the veterans, uh, serving on city council. Uh, thank you for your service, Mayor, uh, Councilmember London. Uh, just also a quick reminder that the city, the city is still accepting applications for anyone interested in serving on the Economic Development Committee, Finance and Audits Advisory Board, and as Councilmember Goodwin mentioned, the Parks and Trails Committee. The application is available on the city website, or you could just contact us if, if interested.
Um, real quick, one, I put the Marine Corps flag out today for the, uh, Marine Corps birthday. Uh, funny phone call, I called the, uh, city attorney to ask if it's okay if I put the flag by my name on the dais. And he goes, well, I'm certainly not telling you no. I don't know if that was a yes, but I placed it anyway. Um, real, real quick, sir. Real quick, um, Councilmember Towery joined me with the city manager Fabrice and we met with the county, uh, to discuss roads. And I know Clutz Roads was talked about a little bit tonight. Um, with Councilmember Towery and, and Fabrice and, and our, even our former interim city administrator slash city manager, this was something that we really pressed. And so I wanted to say thank you to you three, um, for helping me get this over the finish line. Basically every road, uh, Connie, Smith, uh, Edwards, League, Clutz is either gonna be worked on by a developer, county help. And I think only one road, uh, will be by the city by itself. Um, which even if, even though it's a means and bounds, we chose Connie, which was the less of all of them. Uh, and everyone else is participating in upwards of a couple of millions sometimes in this. So, uh, great work, Councilmember Towery, thank you. Uh, Bev, thank you for when you were helping me out on this and Fabrice. And honestly, the council saying this was a, a, an agenda item we wanted to do. And, uh, with that being said, we're, we're gonna deliver on this promise because everything will be touched or done by May of twenty-six. Um, so thank you. Um, to touch on what Councilmember Powers, he did have a meeting, from what I understand, he just got the handshake in and they went to a fire. Uh, he notified me, I was, uh, talking with our city secretary and I kept seeing fire engines run by. Uh, my phone wasn't with me and then I go to my office and I called Councilmember Powers and he goes, yeah, there's a working fire. Of course I show up, he says, of course you show up. So, um, thank you, uh, Chief, for your guys getting over there, uh, so quickly. Uh, to Councilmember Powers' point, uh, y'all got there fast enough to save the house. So, um, good job. And I did speak with the homeowners and, uh, they're just asking for prayers. Uh, and they have a place to stay tonight, I believe, from Chief following up on them. And they were, they've messaged me a few times today saying they're overwhelmed with how awesome the city has been and reaching out to check on them, uh, from the, uh, staff, uh, council and mayor and the fire department. So thank you. Veterans Day is tomorrow. Um, we will be, um, closed, as Fabrice said. We have an event over at, um, the, uh, fire department tomorrow. We have a, uh, Navy veteran who will be, uh, speaking, Daryl Neely, thirty-seven years of total service. Um, he's gonna be our guest speaker. Uh, Judge Russo is gonna be doing our invocation. And we confirmed today that our very own Marine Corps junior ROTC Marine Corps program will be, uh, doing the colors for us. Uh, food will be catered. Please come and just have a meal, thank a vet, and just hang out, have a good time. Uh, six thirty to eight is probably what I feel it's gonna last till. And it's come and go, so in the evening, I didn't, six thirty in the evening. Um, Christmas Village is coming up on December first. I believe that will start at six PM and go to nine PM is what was discussed today. The Christmas Village already has seventeen vendors, including food trucks. That means you're gonna have an opportunity to come out here and have some food. We'll have tables set up. Uh, there will be shopping with these vendors. You can come and buy, uh, items from, I, I don't even know what they are, but bracelets, maybe, food, bread, cakes, pies, pudding, who knows? But Santa will also be here. The fire department is going to have an amazing backdrop this year with their brush truck, a balloon arch and Santa. And it's just gonna be a fun maze that you get to walk through and, and, and hopefully bring people together. Um, I do want to point out, Councilmember Goodwin points out, week after week after week, for volunteers needed for the parks. Fabrice points out, week after week, and I say that week after week, but it's council meeting after council meeting, for EDC audit. Uh, and I don't even know if the full comprehensive plan review committee, is that full? That's full, okay. People, if you want to be involved and you want to understand the growth of the city and you want to be able to protect things that are coming in, then you have to step up and volunteer. It, it, when they say it takes a village, it takes a village. Uh, these, these things, an EDC can give Peyton Sherman, our finance, or not our finance, well, finance director can help too in this, but our, uh, city planner gives him direction and understanding of where things go. An audit committee, uh, is, you know, uh, checks and balances, making sure that our staff is doing the right things with your tax dollars. Uh, and then parks. I mean, you just saw that we're gonna have a, a forty-seven acre park. And Councilmember Goodwin is trying his hardest to figure out a way to get people involved. Uh, so step up, be a part of it. You might find that you had a say in something and, and you helped your city grow. Uh, and that's all I have. That, we, we have posted a vacancy, has, we've gotten applications in yet, but we do have an opening. Is it one opening or two on planning and zoning?
It is, we have opening for two, uh, alternates.
Two alternates, because we were able to move the alternates up
That's right.
To fill the void, so it's two alternates is what we have. Another great
We
way to get involved.
Yeah, we also have one opening on the board, uh, board, Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
One vacancy on there.
Okay. So let's, you know, maybe, maybe do a, um, a text my gov or let's get something on the site. Let's start pushing some things, maybe people just need to know what's going on. Do you have anything real quick?
Yeah, I was just gonna maybe suggest, along with the Christmas deal, because one of the things that TML, they talked about, about getting people aware of things and involved, is when we do our Christmas deal, maybe we have a little pop-up with, with, uh, the boards that are open and somebody there to kind of explain what they do. Uh, cause they'll be here for Christmas, so we'll have a good crowd of folks coming by and, uh, getting us information.
Thank you. And, uh, to close us out, last thing on the Christmas Village, uh, I spoke with the Rockwall Coordinator for Toys for Tots, Jeff Skinner, and we were gonna ask if you come, bring a toy. With that being said, it is eight forty-four and we are adjourned. I'm being the most announced I've ever done.